Any questions for Amy?
Just some favorably.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Goes to the council with a favorable recommendation. Thank you, Amy. Next, we have Bill one thirty-two dash twenty-one from the prosecutor's office, a transfer of sixty thousand six hundred and fourteen now. Anybody from the prosecutor's office?
I thought I saw. Bob Eisenhofer head back to the committee.
He still left the weight notice?
So there's a Bob Eisenhofer sighting?
Yeah. When we were having our public. Thought I saw, might have seen him.
He fled. Well. Do you want John to speak to it? Or do you want to?
If he knows.
Well, I can, well, I can tell you, I helped put this together. They wanted, the prosecutor's office wants to hire a paralegal through their pre-trial diversion fund. So this would affect this year's budget, then they would be coming around in the twenty twenty twenty-two budget to amend that as well for this position. They have sufficient funds in that. Efficient monies in that fund to do so. It's a budget transfer. It's not an additional appropriation.
Any other questions for Mr. Murphy?
You say this is.
I think you're, you made a good point. They're not going to spend that much during this month. It's, it hasn't been prorated. That's. I probably. Right. Right. It is, yes. It's a salary amendment as well. I probably should have, I should have caught that actually and.
It says sixty thousand six hundred and fourteen, doesn't it? Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, good. Yeah, good points. That's, that was a good point. I should have, I should have caught that when they sent that in.
Any other questions for Mr. Murphy?
It's not like committee, obviously, this is not included in next year's.
Right. Correct.
So why wouldn't he? Why wouldn't he just wait till twenty twenty? I mean, is it, is it that crucial for one month?
I asked that question and they wanted to bring it forward at this time. Yes.
That's the best answer he gave you.
Yes, that's what the answer he gave you. Yes.
I just joined. This is Ken Cutter. Are you talking about my request?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't know why. I apologize. I don't know why it's sixty thousand six hundred and fourteen. The idea, just so that you guys all know, we've got, we've getting body cameras for now every law enforcement officer in St. Joseph County. We wanted to have the payment for fifty-one thousand maximum that we would pay the person. It should have actually had also all the fringe. I'll withdraw that and we'll resend it because we can start it. I wanted it for the first of the year, so I apologize if that's what happened. I also apologize for not being there in person. I'm a little under the weather. Over.
Most, yeah. Sounds like Mr. Cutter would like to have us to table that.
Yes, please.
Next month?
Yes, please.
Thank you, Ken.
Mr. Cutter?
Yes, sir.
I appreciate that detailed explanation. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a motion on Mr. Cutter's request?
So.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
It shall be tabled. One thirty-two twenty-one will be tabled.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
I always got to ask, based on a conversation with Mr. Triple today, I was going to ask Bobby Kuzinski to chair my committee tonight since I am still with my family, still dealing with my late brother-in-law's celebration of life. So if you don't mind, Bobby Kuzinski will chair my committee tonight on the next three bills.
Mr. Kuzinski?
I will be glad to do that.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Kuzinski.
Double the pages this evening.
Before we move on, Ken, since you're still on the line, when you represent this, could you provide a little bit more detail on what the job entail too?
Yes, sir, I will. I, yes, just so you know, it's, we're going to need two people to be able to process all of the body cameras for every crime or every case that law enforcement is presenting. There are probably an average of three to four officers. Every case is going to take about two hours of body camera time. And so we need people to be able to take that from the law enforcement to be able to convert it because I have to turn it over to defense. And we just frankly don't have enough people and enough time. That money will come from pre-trial diversion money. I met with Bob and I went through what we have, but I will make sure it's in writing so that you guys have it so you don't have to remember what I just told you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
That's good because we can't always remember what you just told us.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ken. Under engineering and transportation, we have a transfer of one hundred and forty-three dollars from infrastructure planning and growth. Mr. Meters.
Sky Matters Department Infrastructure Planning and Growth, county engineer, offices on the seventh and eleventh floor. What this is, is a, is a transfer from our from NVH with the salary of the highway workers that haven't been expended this year over to help pay for and bring us up, you know, out of, out of the whole little bit in, in the garage motor supplies repairs for vehicles and also the utilities at all of the highway garages. We've seen a quite a bit of repairs this year, a little bit more than normal based on what I've, what I've heard talking to, to the highway guys. So there's, that's the reason we're needing to move, move that money over to this area to make sure we can get through the rest of the year. Hoping it's not going to snow.
I don't think so. Any questions for Sky? Hear none? Do I hear a motion?
Who said favorable?
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Goes to council with a favorable recommendation. Next, we have another transfer of forty thousand from infrastructure planning and growth.
What this transfer is, is it's taking money from our gas and oil lubricants line item, which we have, we have plenty there to transfer and we still have enough to get to the end, through the end of the year over to that garage motor supplies category to try and make sure that, to supplement the other transfer to make sure we can get through the end of the year, this item.
Any questions for Mr. Meters?
Just one on a different subject.
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a motion?
Who said favorable?
All in favor?
Hi.
He goes to council with a favorable recommendation. Your question?
In the ten-second version, have you luck finding any drivers?
Um, we did have the, the open interviews at Riverside Garage. You probably heard about it in the news. Was able to get quite a bit of a free advertising for those positions. We had, we had ten people come to that. That doesn't sound like a lot, but for us it is. If we were to, we were able to get six people had applications in before I got back from the garage. So we've had quite a few there. We're still going through that process, but it looks like we may be able to get, you know, three or four out of that process in itself. So we're still down, but it's looking a lot better. In the situation it's in, just one or two makes a big difference. So, yeah.
Prop fields available on weekends.
That's what I've heard.
And when you do hire them, you'll consider western part of the county, make sure they get plowed first or whatever.
Well, we, we, I was told, let's see, we have designated plow routes.
Yes or no will be fine.
We will try and plow every road within St. Joseph County. How's that one?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a transfer of sixty-four thousand from infrastructure planning and growth. Mr. McNamara.
This is a transfer from the general drain improvement fund, which is drainage assessments that have been amassed through the years. And we are transferring the monies into individual accounts that are either in the red or danger of being in the red in order to bring them up to keep the state board of accounts happy. And we want to do that.
Any questions for Mr. McNamara? Hear none? Do I hear a motion?
Who said favorable?
All in favor?
Hi.
Most favorable. Thank you, John. That's all I have right now, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Under appropriations, budget and administration, Ms. Hess.
President, I have an appropriation request from the election board, forty-six hundred and fifty dollars.
Hi, Rita Glenn, St. Joseph Circuit Court Clerk, one oh one South Main. We are asking for an appropriation of four thousand six hundred and fifty dollars due to the pandemic. We originally had about twenty-seven thousand dollars that was into our contractual. But due to the upgrade on the scanner that we had and additional upgrades to the pole pads were short, and so we're just asking for the money to be put into the same account of zero zero two seven.
Questions for Rita? Rita, hear motion?
Who's favorable?
All in favor?
Hi.
This were the favorable recommendations.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.
Next is a two hundred thousand dollar request from the auditor's office.
This is actually a pass through, through St. Joe County for Logan Industries. So they needed the county to act as a conduit to receive this money. And John Murphy and Corey Shipka from my office worked with them to effect this. I should point out that we were able to get a reimbursement for our efforts of fifteen thousand dollars for St. Joe County.
Any questions for Mr.?
That's only like one or two hours for Mr. Murphy.
Part seven and eight, you know, it's. I just couldn't hear.
We said two or three hours of questioning for Mr. Murphy.
Seven and a half percent. That's not a bad little commission there for him. What do you think, Ross? That's pretty good.
Very good.
I think he drove a good bargain, yeah.
Who's favorable?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Go with favorable recommendation.
Next on the human services criminal justice, Mr. Kuzinski.
Mr. Morton, we have an appropriation of four thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars from Superior Court.
Yes, good evening. This is Liz Hurley, Chief Judge, St. Joseph Superior Court. I am sorry that I'm not there in person. I'm in the car on the way to get my college freshman home for Thanksgiving. But we had applied for this four thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars. The Supreme Court awarded us that money through the court certified court interpreter grant after our initial award was depleted. And so we've received confirmation that we've been awarded that money and so seeking the appropriation of that, of those funds.
Any questions for Judge Hurley? Hearing none? Do I hear a motion?
Just some favorably.
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
It goes to the council with a favorable recommendation. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Same to you. Next, we have appropriation one hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars from PSAP.
Ray Schultz, Executive Director of PSAP, five eight two six six Downey Avenue. John, I'm going to phone a friend on this because I missed it on the agenda and I frankly don't remember what the one sixty-seven was for.
It's for technology maintenance support and telephone cost in your central, the PSAP dispatch operating fund that the county and the cities contribute to. So it's an additional appropriation. Those accounts are short. Prior, you approved budget transfers within this fund earlier tonight, but this is actually an additional appropriation of money. There's significant amount of money in that fund. It's in the neighborhood of about four point nine million dollars currently, but it will be spent down with, with this and with also with the, I think the tower and another maintenance project you approved last, last time.
Right. Okay. So what we did was we had some, we had some infrastructure upgrades that we contracted for earlier, earlier in the year, and this was just the true up of those accounts for that account.
Any questions for Mr. Murphy or Mr. Schultz? Hearing none? Do I hear a motion? All in favor?
Hi.
Goes to the council with a favorable recommendation. Thank you, Ray and John. Next, we have appropriation of six thousand two hundred and thirty dollars and seventy-seven cents from the sheriff's department.
Good evening, Steve Noonan, executive officer. I apologize. I'm not there in person. I too am fighting an upper respiratory infection. The next three items are from a total reimbursement from the Penn Harris Madison School Corporation of forty-six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars and seventy cents for the salaries of the SROs. The telephone costs are too shortage. We have in our telephone cost. As I've explained before, when we took on the financials this year, we are trying to get everything, we're transferring money rather than paying out of another account so that when we go to do the budget, we have some historical perspective. So this may seem mundane, but it's kind of important for us to be able to put these monies in the accounts they need to. So when we look next year, we know exactly what we were spending.
I think we need to vote on just six thousand two hundred and thirty dollars and seventy-seven cents first.
So favorable recommendation.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
It goes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Motion for the nine thousand nineteen dollars and ninety-three cents favorable recommendation.
Do I hear a motion on the nine thousand nineteen ninety-three cents, which Mr. Noonan just explained?
Move to send a favorable.
Do I hear a second? All in favor?
Hi.
And out of the same Penn Harris Madison, do I hear a motion on the thirty-one thousand?
Move to send a favorable.
All in favor?
Hi.
It goes at a council with a favorable recommendation. Next, we have appropriation of five hundred dollars from the sheriff's department.
Again, Steve Noonan, executive officer, offices four oh one by sample. The next two are both five hundred dollar reimbursements to the department. They are going back into the firearms fund, which pays for the training. These come from various entities such as people that use the range, such as the Pocagans, the criminal, or the juvenile justice center, special deputies. It's important that, to us that we recapture this money because, as you know, last year, the fees that we received for gun permits has gone away, so we need to recapture this money back into that fund. And in that, if, correct me if I'm wrong, John, but I believe that is a non-reverting fund.
That's correct, yeah. Steve, this is Steve Dalton. Is this money going to get spent in the next thirty days?
No, it will not. It will go back into the fund. Just, as I said, we're just trying to recapture it back. Historically, that didn't happen, but we felt that we should because, again, the revenue has gone down. There is some legislation to cover some for the next couple of years, but then there's no guarantees after that.
Yeah, I'm not questioning it being your money. I know it's, it should go in that fund and it's been quietest already. I guess if it wasn't going to be spent by the end of December and it's not going to be contracted for something that will be spent by the end of December, it feels like an action that doesn't need to be taken because the money's already sitting in the fund.
Okay, I guess that may be my mistake then, Steve, that I thought it may have gone into the general fund and had to come back to the, but if it didn't, then I guess the next, the other one for fifteen hundred dollars would be mute as well because that is from the same situation.
So I will point out that some department heads prefer when they get money like this to immediately appropriate it so they have the right to spend it right away. So I'm not trying to take away that right from you. It just may not happen in the next month that you spend it. So yeah, more normally in the middle of the year, you get a fifteen hundred dollar check, you want to appropriate it so you can spend it right away. In this case, it made us, it's not going to get spent. So if you tried to spend it even in January, you'd have to re-appropriate it again.
Right, I understand that. I just, this may be my mistake. I didn't know it, the quiet is reverted back into that account. I thought it had to run through a revenue account then into that account, but.
It's, it's in the right account. It's your choice whether or not you want to have the council give you the authority to spend it yet this year.
I think we can withdraw it as long as it's in that account and we're not losing it to, or it's not reverting away from us, I guess.
That account is one one five six. It is in that account because the quiet is attached with the receipt. So it is sitting in that fund.
Okay, that was my mistake then.
That's the two five hundred dollar request.
There's a one five hundred. Is the next five hundred the same?
The next five hundred and then the fifteen hundred below the, not the next appropriation for seventy-five, but then the one below it.
Okay.
You're moving a little bit too fast for us, Steve.
Sorry, I'm trying to take things off your agenda, but I don't think he's going to spend it yet in the next thirty days.
So the five hundred to five hundred and the fifteen hundred.
I think those could all be removed at the request of the petitioner.
Since we're jumping ahead, do I hear a motion on all three requests?
Make a motion to remove all three requests at the request of the petition.
All in favor?
Hi.
They shall be removed.
And I've confirmed they're all three sitting in the right funds, Steve, so they're, they're sitting in your fund.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Next, we have an appropriation of seven thousand five hundred and sixty-two dollars and sixty-three cents from the sheriff's department.
This is money that's been spent out of the overtime fund that's come back to us from the federal partnerships we're involved in, such as the DEA, the FBI, and the ATF task force. We're putting that back in. We've lost another officer yet again. Another officer has resigned. We've also had a couple cases of COVID where we're having to pay more overtime to cover the streets, so I just wanted to shore that up. I think some of that money probably will revert back at the end of the year, but I would rather have it in there and not run short.
Any questions for Mr. Noonan? Hear none? Do I hear a motion?
It's unfavorable.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you, Mr. Noonan.
Thank you. Everybody have a nice Thanksgiving.
Well. Next, we have appropriation of twenty-five thousand five hundred dollars from the probate court.
Cheryl Rush, Controller at St. Joseph Probate Court, one thousand South Michigan Street. We're asking for an appropriation of twenty-five thousand five hundred dollars to fund distribution estate. These are unused grant funds that we have to return.
Any questions for Cheryl? Hear none? Do I hear a motion?
Who's favorable?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Goes to council with a favorable recommendation. Next, we have another appropriation from probate court of seventy-nine thousand seven hundred and ninety-six dollars, twenty-four cents.
Cheryl Rush, Controller at St. Joseph Probate Court, one thousand South Michigan Street. We're asking for seventy-eight thousand seven ninety-six twenty-four to go to fund a distribution estate. Again, this is return of grant funds that were unused.
Participating in your request, move to send there.
Do I hear a second? All in favor?
Right.
It goes to council with a favorable recommendation. Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you.
Next, we have appropriation of nine thousand dollars from the health department.
Amy Rupee, Administrator with the Department of Health, offices on the eighth and ninth floor. And we would like to enter into an agreement to have ninety kids tested in ninety days for lead within our community.
Is that something health department is going to do, Amy?
Um, no, we're going to contract with Legacy Property Management. She's been doing some contractual work for us.
Any questions for Amy?
The only question I have is we have some federal money going into these various things. Is this not a part of that?
For lead testing, I don't believe we've received any money for lead testing, any federal funds.
Okay, this is money actually you as a council have put into the specific dedicated fund for lead abatement.
Okay, fine.
And it's been sitting there quite a while.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Any other questions for Amy? Hear none? Do I hear a motion? All in favor?
I've got, I got a question. Amy first?
Yes.
So what is this exactly that we're contracting? Obviously, we're going to get ninety kids tested, but then those results are provided to the health department and that's where the end of the contract is, or is there analysis that goes along with this, or what exactly is it that we would be purchasing?
Um, I am glad to say that we have Cassie White in the gallery there, who hopefully she can come to the podium and give more of a background.
I'm a step ahead of you with an inferior to Cassie White, but Bob Inter's Health Officer, St. Joseph County Department of Health. I've not been very pleased with the lead testing that we have done so far. We've not been very productive or as productive as we could be, I think. And so we're trying a different, a different, a somewhat different model. And so we've reached out to a one individual, local individual here who lives on the near west side, who has been tasked with going door to door through one very specific neighborhood that we have identified as very high lead within the housing and with, and have identified all the children living there. And so we have tasked her specifically with coming up, going door to door, every single house, educating them about lead, reaching out to the child or the children within the household. And we're working on as well doing point of care testing right there in the neighborhood. So we're working out the kinks. We're not going to get it just right here, but that's our plan. If it with, once it has become successful and we've figured out how to do it well, we intend, we intend to scale this through the high lead districts within, or the high lead census tracts within our county.
So, so then you get these results. Is there analysis or is there identification? Is there anything else that happens with it? Or what this nine thousand dollars would do would get the results of those ninety children to the health department?
This nine thousand will pay her and we have a Notre Dame fellow working with her as well to do all of this canvassing and get all of the lead tests. The lead tests, of course, results come to us within the health department and then any that are elevated, we of course follow up on all of those.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Kenner Ricky?
Thank you. Just to follow up to that, so once we have the data, for one thing, I'm super excited to see some money spent out of this because it's kind of just been building and it's a need that hasn't gone away. So that's wonderful. But, so if we identify a need to this testing, will there then be like a remediation? Is there an intention to maybe spend some of this to help people with remediation or?
Well, not of that specific nine thousand. Of course, working with the, working with the city, the city then has responsibility and has money to do some of this and there are other sources of funding. It would not come from this particular aliquot of funds. But obviously, the intent is, I mean, to do remediation to, to address the root cause. There's not enough money in the, in the county, of course, to address all of the root cause and, but absolutely, we're working closely in our environmental and our lead group working with the city.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Doctor.
Yeah, you want to answer?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, get me out of this, away from this.
I just wanted to add though, so the city of South Bend does have funds specifically for abatement work, but we would love.
But we would love to use those funds to help with some of the areas where abatement isn't the only solution. So we can walk through. We can get cleaning kits. So you can do safe cleaning to help reduce the risk for the child as well. So we'd use the funds for that too.
Awesome, thank you.
Don't go anywhere until they're done.
Either one can answer. I, I guess I'm going to ask this based upon, uh, a previous meeting and that we had. And I just very concerned about some of the comments of the buy-in from the parents, which is crucial. How do you plan to address that? I mean, is that, you know, you know, that was, that was very concerning to me as far as the end result and, and any type of
Yeah.
Effectiveness.
Yeah. Um, and so one of those is we have a social needs assessment that the community health workers utilize in partnership with some of the other individuals in the lead space. And so we walk through trying to remove some of the other barriers that families face. So that way we can make lead remediation their top priority. And so that's one way that we're working through. And with the community health workers, their role is to help build relationships with the different family members. And so they're, they're walking alongside them, um, over three months to a year, trying to get, get to that point.
Okay, I appreciate that. So the, the community health workers you referred to are part of the grant that was passed?
Um, no, so that's separate. So we have three community health workers that are paid out of the lead fund.
Okay.
To focus solely on working with families who have children with lead poisoning.
Okay.
But it, but it is true that the community health workers that will be funded from the CDC grant are working together with that team.
That's, that's what I, okay, that's why I'm asking the question.
All of them working together.
That's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah.
Okay.
They're all trained to be able to do the lead testing. So that way we can scale up, um, the amount of testing that's happening across the county.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Yeah, just to go on with what Raphael just said, you know, that's been my experience or is that we've often had programs, but then the people in the houses didn't want those programs or didn't sign up. And maybe it was a complicated process with a kind of a long form. I don't know all the reasons, but I think
Yeah.
That one of the biggest things is that we actually get these people to approve this. And that's, that's what you're addressing, right?
Yes, so especially for the city grant, um, with lead abatement. Our community health workers have gone through the application and have become experts in that. So they can help, um, community members apply for the funding.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next, we have appropriation of twenty-seven. I thought we did. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Goes to council with a favorable recommendation.
Everybody else does.
Next, we have appropriation of twenty-seven thousand five hundred from the health department.
Attached is, uh, two donations that we received. One is for the faith in vaccine program that we participated in. The other is a donation, um, to have a speaker come to a conference that we're going to have in April.
Any questions for Evna? Amy? Here and none? Do I hear a motion?
Move to some favorable.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It goes to council with a favorable recommendation. Next, we have appropriation of eleven thousand six hundred and thirty from emergency management. Take your time, John. We're in no hurry. John Antonucci, St. Joseph County Emergency Management. The next three items, eleven thousand six hundred and thirty dollars, one hundred and twenty-five thousand three hundred and eighty-five dollars and thirty-nine cents and thirty-five hundred are all fully executed grants from FEMA and, uh, or pass-through grants from the Indiana Department of Homeland Security. The first grant, the eleven thousand six hundred and thirty dollars was a emergency management, uh, performance grant. It was used to purchase a hazardous materials, uh, gas monitoring system that will be, uh, primarily used by our new, um, Department of Risk Management and Safety. It will also be available to our highway department, um, to be able to test certain areas that workers may enter to make sure that, uh, there's not a toxic, um, atmosphere. And this, uh, system is also available to any of the first responders in St. Joseph County that may, that may need it. Do I hear a motion on eleven thousand six thirty?
Senator Fable?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
He goes to the council with a favorable recommendation. Now you can speak, John, on the one twenty-five. The one hundred and twenty-five thousand three hundred and eighty-five dollars and thirty-nine cents is from, um, Indiana Department of Homeland Security SHSP grant, uh, which deals with overall security of, of a community. We have been successful, I think, four years in a row with this grant, um, specifically to be able to retrofit, to continue to retrofit our outdoor warning siren system, to be able to convert it from, uh, direct current power to alternating current power. Um, this grant will complete, um, the balance of our sirens. I believe it's thirty-one sirens. Any questions for Mr. Antonucci? Here and none? Do I hear a motion?
Move to the favorable.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It goes to council with a favorable recommendation. And then we, thirty-five hundred. The final, um, grant is a community foundation grant that comes out twice a year, specifically that grant is aimed at, again, um, first responders and public safety um, situations. We were able to procure a, um, three new defibrillators for the county city building. So I think that brings our number to seven, not including the courts, um, that were able to, um, put on, um, alternating floors. Our hope is to be able to, um, have a defibrillator on every floor as well as, um, this grant also was able to, um, purchase um, some first aid kits that, um, are linked with a phone app so that anyone should be able to render some sort of first aid using this kit by being able to have access to, uh, an app on their cell phone. Any questions for Mr. Antonucci?
Those kits are in the county city building or are those out somewhere? The first aid kits?
The first aid kits are in the county city building, yes, as well as the defibrillators.
Better make sure Scott's got the wireless up.
Any other questions for Mr. Antonucci? Here and none? Do I hear a motion?
Move to the favorable.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nice job, John, on the grants. Next, we have a appropriation of fourteen thousand six fifty-one adult probation.
Good evening, uh, the Bad Penny of Adult Probation, Jesse Carlton showing up again. Um, appropriating grant funds that we have received from the partnership, which is our local drug-free community council. Um, we're going to use these funds to enhance our drug testing panel and increase access to services for the defendants that are in our problem-solving courts. So both our drug court and our veterans' court program.
Any questions for Jesse? Here and none? Do I hear a motion?
Move to some favorably.
All in favor?
Aye.
Goes to council with a favorable recommendation. Next, we have a sixty thousand dollar appropriation.
This is an appropriation request for grant funds that we have received from the Indiana Supreme Court, uh, for the state opioid response grant. Um, we are using these funds for recovery coaches who are contracted and placed in our probation department. So that way the defendants have easy access to those individuals as they progress through the various forms of supervision.
Any questions for Jesse? Here and none? Do I hear a motion?
Move to some favorably.
All in favor?
Aye.
Goes to council with a favorable recommendation. Next, we have appropriation from adult probation.
Yep, this is another grant that we have received from the Indiana Supreme Court, um, totaling nine thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Um, these funds will be used for advanced, um, drug testing for the problem-solving court program.
What program?
Our problem-solving courts, drug court and vet court. Sorry, sir.
You're not familiar with that?
Still do a lab tour if you get bored, so.
What'd you say?
Go do a tour of the lab if you get bored, so.
Oh, okay. Appreciate that.
Any other questions for Jesse? Here and none? Do I hear a motion?
Move to the favorable.
All in favor? Goes to council with a favorable recommendation. Next, we have bill one thirty-four dash twenty-one from adult probation.
This is a salary amendment and an appropriation request. Um, we are amending the salary amount for the probation officer that's included in here, just to be in compliance with the, um, Indiana probation officer standards. Make sure that we meet those. Um, it's also appropriating funds, um, the second half of the pre-trial grant for the year for a supervisor probation officer, the line probation officer, and three part-time public defenders who are contracted for the sole purpose of representation at the initial arraignments and initial hearings for felony offenders.
Here and none? Do I hear any questions on one thirty-four twenty-one? Do I hear a motion?
Move to some favorably.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Goes to council with a favorable recommendation. Thank you, Jesse. Next, we have bill one thirty-three dash twenty-one. Appropriation from Portage Manor.
Uh, Patty Gotti, President.
Go ahead, Patty.
I'm sorry. Patty Gotti, President of Portage Manor. Um, this is a twofold. Um, it's increasing the pay for the administrator as well as adding back an adminis-, uh, assistant administrator. We have found going through the process of possibly building a new building and finding source um, for revenue to help in that, that it's actually way too much for one person. And in addition to that, um, when the administrator is out of county or out of state, we are not in compliance with Indiana code, um, because we have nobody else licensed to run that facility in the building. So the three thousand four sixty-two would be what the last pay would be.
So let me, Patty, this is Steve. Let me just comment so that I can make sure we're all on the same page. This is a pay increase for the executive director at the Portage Manor and the creation of a new position as assistant director?
Yes.
Okay, so it's a creation of a new position and a pay increase, although the number is very small for December. It will also continue to happen all of next year. And this did not exist in the budget you already approved for Portage Manor. So I just wanted to make sure you're getting the picture of the request, which maybe opens the question for pushback to Patty or Frank or whomever. What is the continuing plan of the Portage Manor Board? Because we are, we know we already have a bit of a deficit problem.
Um, we're planning on taking this from the reserves. Um, we did have an administrative assistant until two years ago. Um, and then that position was removed by the previous director.
So Patty, you're planning on using reserves this year and then next year for?
Yes.
Request?
Yes.
What's the extent of your reserves? How much?
I don't have that number in front of me.
They have a million dollars right now.
Thank you, Steve.
They will make it through next year. They will probably even make it through twenty twenty-three, but we can't do this forever.
Okay, that was my question. How sustainable is it?
Two years.
Two years, okay.
Right, well, and it's our, our plan to, if we can move forward and do the building and increase our revenue and go to the, the Medicaid, or Medicare plus, um, uh, Frank, I lost my word.
Medicaid waiver?
Waiver, that we will increase our, our funding. And then this will also enable us with extra personnel to search for grants and additional funding on top of that.
At a minimum, this is adding ninety thousand dollars for these two positions for next year.
Correct.
You know, and as noted, you know, salary goes on forever. So, you know, we might be able to finance it out of reserves one year. It doesn't mean we can finance it forever. It's just a, it's a comment.
No, no, and I understand, sir. We've been interviewing, um, quite a few people. Um, and most people coming to us for the director position is paid over a hundred thousand a year. So this is a low-end number that we're asking.
But Patty, you are saying that, um, this should help you, this additional personnel should help you to find additional resources. So this.
Yes, this person would also have to be licensed. So when the administrator is out of county or out of state, um, as it has happened in the past, Indiana code says that we were in violation during that time. This will keep us from being in violation because that, that administrative or the assistant director will also be licensed.
And then dividing the duties up, like you said, so one can concentrate more on operational activities and the other on strategic. That'll allow you the opportunity to increase, potentially increase the revenues in addition to that effort.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Patty, did you limit any position to do this or no?
No.
Okay.
We, we run on a very low-key, um, employees to run that facility twenty-four hours. If you look at our employees compared to any other twenty-four hour facility, we're very low.
Any other questions for this guts? Here and none? Do I hear a motion?
Move to some favorably.
I'll, I'll second that and just to make a comment here to Patty, Frank, and anybody else who might be listening is that just a few months back, we kind of decided, I decided, I don't know that everybody on the council decided this, but I kind of decided to give you some rope in order to try to see if you could make this work. And I, I think this is still part of that. So we can't continue, you know, these types of, uh, more appropriations, but, or there's more funding, but yes, I'm, I'm, I'll vote in favor of this and give you a little bit more rope to see if you can, we can get this worked out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Here and none? Do I hear a motion? In a second, no, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
It goes to council with a favorable recommendation. Next, we have bill one thirty-five dash twenty-one for the prosecutor's office.
Good evening, Ken Cotter, Prosecutor, Tenth Floor, County City Building. Uh, this is an appropriation request for grant funds, uh, for the Special Victims Unit, uh, to be able to prosecute and investigate sexual assault, method violence and assault abuse. It's one hundred and eighty-four thousand nine hundred and eight dollars and it is grant funds. I'd ask for a favorable recommendation.
Questions for Mr. Cotter? Here and none? Do I hear a motion?
Move to the favorable.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Goes to council with a favorable recommendation. Next, we have bill one thirty-six dash twenty-one from the prosecutor's office.
Ken Cotter, again, Tenth Floor, County City Building, Prosecutor, St. Joseph County. This is also a pro-, uh, request for appropriation for grant funds for adult protective services. Uh, the amount of four hundred and sixty-nine thousand one hundred and thirty-three dollars. It is also grant-funded and we, I'd ask for a favorable recommendation.
Move to some favor. Go your second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Cotter.
Yes, sir. Have a great day. Yes, sir. Have a great holiday.
Thank you. Under engineering and transportation, Mr. Krasinski?
President Morton, we have appropriation of two hundred and sixty-five thousand seven hundred and sixty-one dollars. Mr. Meter.
Sky Matters County Engineer. Uh, that first, the first appropriation for two hundred and sixty-five thousand seven hundred and sixty-one dollars is a rea- is to appropriate that, that was a reimbursement from Penn High School where we, uh, put as part of their project of paving some of their parking lots into our paving package. And we, we originally paid that out. They're reimbursing that portion for us, and that will be put in so that, um, it, it covers that back into the, uh, pavement reconstruction.
Any questions for Scott?
Yeah, did you get fifteen thousand dollars for doing that like John did?
No. Not me. I'm not as good as John. Right.
Do I hear a motion?
Motion's unfavorable.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have appropriation of one million dollars.
This is the, uh, million dollars from the state for the Community Crossings Grant Award, the fifty-fifty match that we were awarded, uh, earlier this year. Uh, we were finally able to get that money in, and we want to appropriate that in order to be able to, uh, pay the contractor that has been working on that project. So that money will be going towards paving projects that have occurring and are finishing up now.
You saying it's the state that's the source of the money?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And, go ahead, Steve.
Sky, can you just give us an update? It may not be related to this, but the American Rescue Plan dollars were put on the table for paving uh, project or a major series of paving projects. And I think I heard that the bills came in, or at least the bids came in higher than that four million dollars. Is this at all connected to that?
This is not connected to that at all.
How are you going to pay for the rest of that paving project?
Well, that, that's a good question. Um, I think there's some other avenue, there's some avenues that I'm pursuing at the moment. Um, I may even put in another request to, uh, the American Rescue Plan Committee, or I may come before the council to chat a little bit about that in the future. They, they came in, uh, eight hundred thousand dollars over the, the estimate of around four million. Um, and a lot of that has to do with what we're seeing with, you know, just increased costs due to everything that's going on.
And there was some, we, we included or asked you to include some parks projects.
Yes.
Is that Parks Project's part of that four point eight million dollars?
The, the Parks Project is, is not part of that four point eight million dollars. The Parks Project were bid with ours.
Okay.
But there's, it was, it, it's a separate number, and they came in under budget.
Perfect.
So people like to work in parks, I guess.
All right, so this is unrelated, this million dollars is unrelated to that previous four million?
Yes, that, that, that was, uh, that's related to a pavement package we put out earlier in the year that is wrapping up now, actually some mainline paving.
Okay. Did that cover what you were gonna ask as well, Bobby?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Do I hear a motion?
Move it to the favorable.
Are you a second? Or did?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Goes to council with a favorable recommendation. Sky would, uh, work on that other request of eight hundred thousand?
Yes. I have, I've started that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you all for your time.
Or you could just cut out all the paving on the west side.
He already has cut off all the paving on the west side.
Well, there's no pay, but we don't have to.
That's all I have right now, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Next, under Budget Administration, Ms. Hess?
Uh, we have an appropriation request for twenty-five thousand dollars from the History Museum is coming from the ARP funds.
You're there.
So Brian Harding also brought with me, uh, Kristi Erickson. I'm the Director of the History Museum, Deputy Executive Director of the History Museum. We are, uh, seeking funding for expansion of our broadband capabilities at the, uh, at the museum for remote meeting purposes, uh, train, virtual training sessions as well as, um, creating a seamless wireless network at the, at the museum so we can continue to expand our audience and get our offerings out to the students, uh, as well as our visitors in general.
Questions for Brian and Kristi?
This is obviously eligible broadband projects. We're specifically spelled out in the American Rescue Plan.
Uh, these are requests, yes, that are coming forward, uh, from ARP were discussed, um, in a different meeting that we have with the full council to discuss these ARP projects before sending them to the committee, then onto full council, so. Any questions, any additional questions for? Brian, Kristi, if not, do I hear motion?
Move it to the favorable.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This forward with the favorable recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next. Also coming out from, uh, American Rescue Plan Fund is seventy-five thousand dollar request from Penn Township.
Madam Chair, I don't believe that either of the townships were asked to attend in person this evening since they had provided, uh, application materials. I wonder if it might make our process quicker if I just summarize the conversation that the committee had when they looked at numerous applications. This one is the Penn Township application, which is for seventy-five thousand dollars for fire-related equipment that was damaged during COVID, and they would like to replace for personal protective gear for the firefighters. There were numerous other requests made by Penn Township. This is the only one that's coming to you right now with a recommendation from the ARP Committee.
Thank you, Steve.
Move it to the favorable recommendation.
Second.
Bart, say.
Oh, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Those were the favorable recommendation. Uh, and then Madison Township was next with a fifty thousand dollar request.
Similarly, Madison Township, fifty thousand, very similar request for equipment. Uh, they, uh, that was damaged. They actually asked for less than the full cost. They, they only asked you for a portion of the full cost replacing that equipment. Uh, and this is the only two townships that you have in front of you so far from American Rescue Plan.
Any questions, Steve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any close, misordered, favorable recommendation? Thank you.
That's what I meant to say.
Next, under Human Services Criminal Justice, Mr. Krasinski?
Morton, we have a fifty thousand dollar request from Portage Manor of ARP Fund.
I assume one of you is handling this, yes?
Uh, Patty Gatsi, from President of Portage Manor. This is to be able to hire, um, consultant for the study for the feasibility of building a new Portage Manor. Um, we are hopeful that this is enough. We did speak with, um, a company today that seemed very, very interested and very much on focus with what we currently have and what we want to continue to have and to keep it family oriented. And, um, we do have a meeting on the thirtieth with them.
So is this a, Patty, was this a feasibility study or was this?
Yes.
Or was this just a? I thought we.
It's the feasibility.
Okay, well, I thought we had decided we didn't need the feasibility study and needed just to get quotes. I want it to be to develop.
Okay, Frank? No, yeah, counsel, I'm sorry. It's, when we say feasibility, I'm sorry, this is Frank Fotia. I'm on the board of Portage Manor. And, um, what this study is, is to look at, if we were to build a building, how would we build it so that it would be self-sufficient? So, look, they are coming next week to tour the current facility, see how the staff interacts with the residents, see what the needs of the residents are, because they do recognize that we serve a very unique population at Portage Manor as one of the few homes in the entire state that does serve this population, and, um, their whole history is building facilities that are long-term care facilities. They are out of Fort Wayne, and they assisted Allen, they assisted Allen County in building their new county home. So this language with being able to figure out how many beds we would need, that would be Medicaid waivered, how many residents we have that would not qualify for Medicaid waiver, but maybe need other sources. They're very familiar with all of those state funding mechanisms. So when we're using the word feasibility, it really is determining, we're not just going to go build a building and hope it works out. It's to really do the math behind it to make sure that if we move forward with the building, this is how we can pay for it. This is then, once it's built, it will be self-sufficient, and we won't be coming back. Like we are now saying, the building can't sustain itself. So it is more components than just how much does it cost to build a new building? We want the building to be profitable and successful and be the building that the residents need and that the county needs frankly.
Okay, thank you, Frank.
Yeah.
Just, uh, I had, I had the notion that at one time we were talking about a lot more money than fifty thousand.
We were, there have been requests and conversations over the last two years about numbers in the excess of ten million dollars to fix up that building. Uh, there's been conversations about a, about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do additional architectural work. This is a much smaller request to do a business modeling, a performer, if you will, of what kind of building would be financially feasible.
Yeah, that one hundred and twenty-five thousand kind of stuck in my mind is some of the early comments.
And I believe originally we had asked for about a hundred and twenty-five thousand for the feasibility study, and at the ARP discussion, it was cut down to fifty. We're hopeful that fifty thousand is going to be what this study costs, but in meeting with the company today, they were reluctant to come up with a figure until they had the opportunity to come look at, like I said, the population that we serve, the current facility and the grounds, and kind of see what would be best and be able to come back with multiple options for the board and the council to consider. So, like I said, I don't know that fifty thousand is going to be enough because they are doing all of that pro forma work as well as just.
In my experience, in my experience, on the other side of this, if you ask for a hundred thousand dollar study, you'll get a hundred thousand dollar study.
For, for clarity, Frank, when we were initially talking about the larger sums, I, I think part of that was to, to review if the current building could be uh, somehow retrofitted, a- and I think kind of what Diana was alluding to is, uh, we're past that now. I think we all agreed that that is not an option we even want to explore. So, so this, this study is focused only on what a new facility would look like, correct?
Correct. The only reason why they want to tour the current facility is they very much are resident happiness focused. They want to make sure that the building they built is going to satisfy the needs and recognizing that unlike a lot of long-term care facilities, which probably you go into when you're in your eighties or nineties and you maybe have an average stay of three years, our residents are going in and they're spending twenty, thirty years of their life. This is their only home. And the needs of that population are a little different than the average one, and they have some experience in this space. So rather than just pull a plan off the shelf and give it to us, it is going to be tailored to what we need here in Saint Joe County and make sure that when we do build a building, it can be sustainable.
Great, thank you.
So, so Frank, um, really appreciate that detailed explanation. So this, so you're saying even though Portage Manor is very unique in the population that they serve, this company has background in this very similar facilities?
They do, and in fact, when we were talking today and we mentioned that the people there qualified based on the building for R cap funding, this is the first time we haven't had to explain to somebody what our cap funding was. They know exactly what it was. So we were very encouraged by their approach and their knowledge base, and obviously we have not engaged them yet. They're coming up next Tuesday to take a look, but um, in our search, we didn't just want to, you know, go to, uh, an architecture firm that can build things, but have no experience in this space because, you know, we, we understand that this is not just a regular construction project.
Exactly. Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Patty or Frank? Here and then do I hear a motion?
Move just some favorably.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Frank.
Thank you.
Patty?
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.
One hundred and fifty thousand from Probate Court.
Well, Rush Controller at Saint Joseph Private Court, one thousand South Michigan Street, uh, Judge Chikwits and Dr. Brunsmas send their apologies. They had prior commitments so they couldn't be here. So I'm just going to read a statement from him. Uh, we are requesting funding to begin a planning process to develop two group homes. The capacity would be six to eight youth per home. Twelve independent living apartments for youth transitioning back from residential care development, uh, sorry, Department of Corrections or other long term care facilities back into our community. The expansion of these continuum of care facilities would be located on the property east of the Juvenile Center bounded by Fellow Street, uh, Dean Boulevard and Ohio Street. The money's requested is up to a hundred and fifty thousand to begin the planning process. After the planning process is completed, a detailed proposal would be brought to the council for, uh, would be presented to the council. The court is excited about this opportunity and will be given, uh, opportunity given. It will help reduce recidivism and provide the appropriate care for the treatment of youth returning to the community. Thank you for considering this request.
Any questions for Cheryl? She's probably hoping that there is.
I'm hoping there's none.
Don't worry, you don't have to apologize. We prefer you over Judge Chikwits and Dr. Brunsmas anyway.
We've read your mind. Do I hear a motion?
Move just some favorably.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Goes to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have an appropriation of eighteen thousand from the Health Department.
Frank Fotia, uh, Saint Joe County Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth. Uh, we have, um, gotten a proposal back from CDS for eighteen thousand dollars, uh, to look at what it would cost to move the Health Department over to occupy the entirety of the law building, and then also move um, Purdue Extension and the Building Department over here and reshuffle the space in the County City Building that the Health Department would be vacating. Um, CBS was involved in a space study several years ago and has looked at various um, potential occupants of the law building. So the reason why it's coming in at eighteen thousand dollars is a lot of the HVAC and mechanical upgrades and work in the law building that has already been done. So at this point, it's just some space allocation stuff, so, um, is a relatively inexpensive study to look at what that would cost to be able to then give the Health Department the opportunity to have a clinic with ground floor access that's separate from the rest of the building, and then as they continue to add on more staff and community health workers, um, they currently have staff that is meeting in cafes and coffee houses because we don't have adequate space here in the County City Building for that.
Dr. Einharts, would you like to comment on that at all, or?
While he's getting up there, Frank. Not that I don't think it's a, a good idea for the Health Department to have that access, but wouldn't we be putting the Building Department in a position where they no longer have that ground floor access and there's foot traffic there? So I don't understand the reason.
So, there is, but oftentimes people who go to the Building Department have to then come in to cross the street and come into this building to go to either city offices or IPG to get other permits or zoning applications, and we're constantly sending um, builders, developers back and forth across the street. Um, so while they do have foot traffic, it isn't exactly convenient for the people visiting the Building Department all the time because they do have a lot of interaction here with either going to the zoning office or getting a driveway permit from Public Works or other things to complete those, um.
So that, the, the second half of this study, or I guess, whatever, part of the study has been moving the Building Department over here in proximity to those other departments?
Correct.
Thank you.
So, Bob Linters, Health Officer, Saint Joe County, um, on the eighth floor of this building. Uh, just to echo what Frank said, uh, this, uh, really should be viewed as a win-win for. Just to echo what Frank said, this really should be viewed as a win-win for the two departments and particularly a win for individuals seeking vaccines through the county. And particularly I'm thinking of individuals who seek the usual vaccine, childhood vaccines. These, these are generally individuals of a relatively low income and it's very difficult for and imposing for individuals to have to come through security up to the eighth floor, ninth floor, excuse me, where our immunization clinic is, immunization clinic up there is, is not big enough. You all, if you've come here to this building during the day, over the last couple of months, you've noticed that our COVID clinic is down there. We're pleased that we have the COVID clinic down there, but it's really not the appropriate space for such a clinic. And so having something on the main floor, I will say, and this is what I've said to others who have Frank and others who have been supportive of this move, it, it's not just the building, we also are going to need some parking. And so we want to make this building accessible to the members of our community that we serve. And that means there has to be some parking availability. And there is availability. Some people might have to give up their special parking places in order so, in order for patients to be able to access the health, the clinic, something else to keep in mind.
Mr. Katanzerite?
I just wanted to mention Bobby, I, I, maybe Frank can answer this for us. I thought when I, we asked this question more recently to Bill Shalio, but I, I thought with ERP coming, I thought an app was being developed, that we were seeing more developers and builders move away from actual paper permitting process where it's going to be more of an online app permitting process. Just wanted to confirm that with Frank if possible.
I can speak too, and I know Councilman File has been incredibly involved with that aspect, that some of the health department permitting with septic and wells as well as some of the permits that IPG have, there is a module that fits into the Tyler Munus world and we are all very much in favor of adopting that once we get through the implementation that we're doing now with financial and some of the other things. Bandwidth will open up within our IT department and some of the other departments to be able to bring that on, but it is definitely our hope within the next year to be able to bring on that permitting system so that developers can apply for those permits online, which would significantly reduce the amount of foot traffic coming then into the county city building. I think I mentioned at the ARP meeting, while we're able to get to a place in the next year, eighteen months where we can take those applications over the internet, the health department will not be able to give vaccinations over the internet.
Frank, does this include?
Thank you.
Frank? Does this include the assessors also, assessors office in regards to that permitting?
I don't believe they were a part of any of those conversations. I don't know. What we're talking about are septic well permits, driveway permits and some zoning applications online. I don't know what.
And all of the building permits, which is a huge amount, but that's a different subject, but that's also part of this whole thing.
And streamlining food services as well.
Yep.
Stevie, any questions?
No, I would just point out and answer to your question about the assessor, they don't particularly handle permits, but they do do appeals. And so some counties have moved their appeals process online, which would save people from having to come here. That's not part of this current plan or scope of work.
Thank you.
The septic permit program, you know, and I've worked with these young people within focus and if you're an older person like I am and you want some assurance that there's a lot of wonderful young people out there, then do it in focus programs. So they did a lot of work on this and there's a lot of activity with regard to septic permits and a complicated process compared to what these, these young people have come up with. So we're excited to get it going. It does take some more computer time to do that.
Everybody who has looked at that module at, at the county level and all of the departments is very much in favor of moving forward. So this council should definitely expect in the near future and appropriation ask from, I don't know if it'll be from Bree or who, or Scott or somebody to add on some additional Tyler modules, but we're very excited about the possibilities and this financial system is just really the beginning of being able to really move a lot of our services online to better serve our residents.
Thank you Frank.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, do I hear a motion on the eighteen thousand dollars? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you to all involved. Next we have bill one thirty-nine dash twenty-one from the health department. Dr. Einhard.
Yeah, thank you Bobby Inter's Health Officer, Department of Health, County City Building, eighth floor. I'm here representing a coalition of institutions and departments, joining me in Sheriff Redmond on Zoom, Lori Nassegger, Nassegger from Oaklawn, Lori Miro, who is a consultant hired by the Department of Health for this behavioral health crisis facility. And I see Ray Schultz up there as well. Nancy Lockhart has been very much involved as well, representing nine one one. I have spoken on a number of occasions about the St. Joseph County behavior, the proposed St. Joseph County Behavioral Health Crisis Facility. And so I'm here today asking for an appropriation. It's an appropriation request for nearly two point seven million for the first year of creating, renovating the site for the behavioral health crisis facility and staffing that site through year one. I am happy to give a greater description and presentation about this if you would like, but I believe I've spoken with this entire group previously. So perhaps in interest of time, just be very happy to answer any questions in the call.
Procedure, this is a, is this like a hearing on the, our program, not subject to answer an answer tonight, isn't that right?
This is the decision whether we're going to move something forward to the full council for a vote.
Okay. Yeah, because we, in ARP committee, we said we're going to take all these matters and then come back and decide what to do with each, if they're large like this. Does that fit that pattern?
Also at the ARP meeting, we decided to send this to the.
Yeah.
Committee. It's already.
Okay. Yeah, we, we, it's already gone through the ARP hearing, which is when they presented. Okay. And then we moved it forward to committee and then the next step would be.
So this is a two point seven million dollar request that would be voted on in two weeks. If you send this forward. Isn't the overarching question for Dr. Einhardts and maybe some of you know the answer and I just haven't heard it yet. We understand two point seven million dollars to get it set up and run the first year. We understand it might cost a million, something to run it the second year. Does it ever stop or is there a business model where the county ever gets off the hook or is, are we always subsidizing this entity?
That's a question for me. I'm happy to respond to that. The intention of course is that we are requesting a two-year runway and that at the end of that two-year runway, we will have no reliance on the county, that a business model will be developed as we get experience with this. The facility itself will, will be at Epworth, as you know, and some Memorial Hospital will be the primary recipient of, or sub-recipient in this case of the bulk of the funds. They understand very clearly that, that there is nothing beyond the two years. Clearly this facility and the system itself is of great need and is broadly supported throughout the county. We do expect and through conversations with state and Lori Nassegger is here and can describe more of this, but through conversations with state that is down in Indianapolis, we fully expect additional funding to become available. In full transparency, there's no question that if there was a way to do this right now, it would have been done. So we're going to need to figure this one out. It's one of the reasons we've asked for, one of the reasons I brought on Lori Miro as a consultant, executive nurse experience, executive administration experience, and she's working with us within the health department. Our health department job will be to, if you will, keep the toes of the hospital, Memorial and Epworth to the fire to ensure that they are delivering on their, on what we all are expecting. But at the same time, we need to be figuring out how to, how, how the business model is going to work. And as we get experience, we obviously expect revenue coming from the patient care itself. We expect extramural funding to be coming forward from state and I fully anticipate that we'll be looking into philanthropic sources as well for this. Let me ask Lori to expand on that.
The part I can reinforce here, as I have had conversations with Jay Chattery, who is the head of the Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services, which is part of FSSA, and this does line up with what they want to do. And he told me that they will welcome a proposal that especially if there was community support like this to get it started. So it's kind of a win-win. He'll be more in if he knows that you're in and that will be then an important next step for us. I feel very confident about that.
Can I, so, so as we get the ball rolling on this, doctor, we, we've talked a little bit about the little bit more difficult to quantify cost benefits. Is that something you've talked with, with the, you know, Sheriff Redmond or Director Schultz about maybe trying to begin to track how this is offloading some expense maybe from the criminal justice, you know, law enforcement side of things? I mean, can we get some data on that from the get-go?
We certainly hope to do that. We recognize it, it's a bit of a complex question and it will not be perfect, but it's certainly our intent to do that based on the literature that we have reviewed in other places where such facilities have been set up. We fully expect there to be cost savings and speaking for Sheriff Redmond, though he's on the line, I think still, it can speak for himself. He certainly expects to unburden his facility, the jail from, of some of the individuals who would have gone there likewise to the emergency room. We expect to see some savings there. Candidly, again, the savings are in aggregate and it's not county dollars that go, for example, to care for somebody in the emergency room, but overall in terms of our tax dollars, our insurance dollars, we're looking at a more efficient system and a system that will provide much better care.
And certainly, I mean, the, the, there are direct savings through the reduced calls for service and that sort of thing. Yeah. Thank you.
Doctor, when you make reference to coming up with a future business model, who is going to have that responsibility? Is that going to be a collaboration? And, because I'm, I'm very concerned about that because, I mean, I can see the concern that you have with that moving forward. And I mean, I'm, I totally support this in theory, but totally, but developing that plan moving forward after the two years, whose, whose responsibility is that going to be?
I wish Larry Tracy was able to join us today. Unfortunately, he had a meeting with the American Hospital Association that was scheduled prior to this one and had to be at that meeting, but he is all, all on board. Ultimately, it's going to fall on Memorial Hospital and Epworth, candidly, and they know that, they accept that challenge, they accept that risk. They're not getting into this, into this business, if you will, to fail. They clearly want to succeed. He believes that he can succeed and ultimately it's going to be their responsibility because they're the ones who are going to be delivering the care. It's not going to be the St. Joseph County Department of Health. It's going to be Memorial and Epworth who will be ultimately delivering the care. That said, and just to reiterate what I had previously said, I'm fully committed to this and fully committed. Lori, if you want to jo- join me and share your perspectives on that question.
Sure. Hi, I'm Lori Miro, consultant for the health department. Just wanted to expand on that in the sense that we, there's been a large community effort to get this coalition together, to get this project off the ground. And that's not going to stop with, with approval of this project if you should choose to approve it. We, we want to put together advisory board that's going to have key members of the community that have been involved to, to again, develop the metrics, hire the, one of the pieces of the proposal is to hire an analyst that will help develop and track metrics, just as you're talking about, to make sure that we can, you know, show the impact of the project and also continue to make improvements. So it won't just be Memorial Hospital or Oaklawn. It'll be this continued coalition of people coming together, you know, again, for mutual accountability, input and insight.
Appreciate that.
Any other questions? Hearing none, do I hear a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those are counsel with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you, doctor.
Next, the budget administration, Ms. Hess.
Bill number one thirty-seven twenty-one, salary amendment from the auditor.
Evening, Mike Hammond, St. Joe County Auditor with office on the second floor. This is the another tranche of funds for the Emergency Rental Act, three point three million dollars. And you can see on should be page two, a breakdown of how that money is allocated up to July the first, twenty twenty-two. My office is, doesn't know that it's like a department within a department, there's somebody in John's office, there's two, sometimes three people camped out in my office and somebody with Corey Shipka. So a lot of folks in there working hard, trying to get this money to these deserving folks.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Hammond? Have you heard a motion?
It's in barrel.
Thank you.
Aye.
Most favorable recommendation.
That one really isn't.
Ms. Krzyszczewski.
Mr. Norton, next we have bill one twenty-seven dash twenty-one, rest of code book amendment from the health department. Dr. Einhardts.
Yeah, thank you. Bobby Inter's Health Officer, Department of Health, eighth floor, eighth and ninth floors of the Department of Health. Coming before you, representing the Department of Health and the Board of Health with a request that you would consider a paid family leave policy that mirrors the paid family leave policy that the federal government offers to its employees, a policy that was passed under the previous administration that calls for twelve weeks paid parental leave. Though I speak on behalf of the Department of Health and the Board of Health and recognize that we are asking to, if you will, serve as a pilot program for the paid family leave policy, it is our recommendation that this policy pertain across the county. Paid family leave as designed, twelve weeks, will benefit families. The citizens of St. Joseph County, county government, and with our overall aim of improving the health of our community. The proposal that you see that we've shared with you already and that we will, are speaking about this afternoon or this evening, was primarily put together by the two women standing, sitting behind me, Taylor Martin and Cassie White. Cassie's the director of our health equity epidemiology and data unit, and I will defer to her to share a slide presentation in just one second. In a nutshell, we're asking for an investment in paid family leave because we believe and I hope to show, they will show that the evidence shows that paid family leave promotes and nurtures families and their health. It will enable St. Joseph County government to be more competitive.
It will enable St. Joseph County Government to be more competitive. In the job market for recruitment and retention. So that we really can compete for the best and the brightest. Councilman File talked about. The expertise and the passion and enthusiasm of and focus in the young people in and focus. We want those people here in our county and we want to retain them in our county government. We wish to retain them. And by promoting and nurturing families and their health and by enabling St. Joseph County Government to be more competitive. I firmly believe that we will ratchet up the quality of the services provided by the county. So with that, let me ask Cassie to share with you. A very short PowerPoint presentation that provides some of the evidence that has been. Discussed and debated at length at the federal level and. So Cassie.
Thanks, Bob. Cassie White, St. Joseph County Health Department, eighth floor, Director of Health Equity Epidemiology and Data. So to start, as Dr. Ainter has referenced. And our current policy is the, under FMLA, which is the whole county health department has. And there is, we do have short-term disability that only covers up to a maximum of $250 per week for 12 weeks. And so for there to be covering the cost. For, or payment for employees, they must use vacation sick or personnel or personal days. And then the proposed policy that the Board of Health put before you is to have 12 weeks paid at 100% of the salary. Where benefits will continue, including those sick vacation and personal leave. And then also two weeks per year for foster and kinship placement. And we wanted to show you guys some of what, when we did an analysis across. The state and other entities close by, especially some of the organizations that we've seen. Staff within the Department of Health leave to go to. And so that top one is the federal government that Dr. Ainter has referenced. That under Trump's administration is 12 weeks paid. All of these are paid. The state. Government is at four weeks. The city of South Bend here is six weeks. And then we talked with the Director of HR at Lake County and Allen County to get some guidance as we were drafting this proposal. Which is referenced there as well. And then the city of Louisville, we've worked closely with as they have a couple of other different entities. Within their government where they provided some guidance. When evaluating some research and then Notre Dame and Indiana University. We also wanted to share some of the health benefits. Around paid parental leave. The most we wanted, the biggest one we wanted to highlight is that top bullet point. And that it positively affects breastfeeding rates, decreases infant mortality, increases vaccination rates. In children and maternal health and their mental and physical health and then paternal caregiving. There's been national study that's shown that paid parental leave leads to fewer low birth weight and preterm births. It also reduces infant hospitalizations. And we'll get into a little bit more around how the paid parental leave also increases the female labor force participation. And we know that poverty is a determinant of health. And so this is also a paid parental leave, how it contributes to economic growth and support of families and. Specifically, the Department of Health and the county here. The other one to highlight is that last one is that most daycares, not just in St. Joseph County, but. That they do not accept children prior to six weeks. Okay, and, and then we wanted to highlight a little bit more about retention as well. So the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation recently put out an article talking about the health benefits that were highlighted, but they also talked more about retention rates. And paid parental leave is one of the factors that increases employee retention and helps recruit skilled workers. Like Dr. Ainter's reference, we've even started working with individuals that in focus, but. Also coming out of undergrad or graduate school, we know that this can help support and retain skilled workers. For individuals that leave a job within the first year, these are some of the areas that are highlighted. So career development, work-life balance and wellbeing. There, those are the three that are cited to be the most likely reasons for individuals leaving the workforce. And so we've also, through our research, discovered that the cost of turnover is 30% of an employee's annual salary. And so we'll go into a little bit more specifically within the Department of Health of that cost comparison. The other thing that was highlighted here is we, the county hosted their first job there. Or we saw several county departments looking to fill vacant positions. We were one of them. Looking to bring in skilled workers that want to stay. With us over a long period of time and benefits is one of the main questions that's asked during the interview process. And so this is the, the last slide that we prepared for you and then we're happy to answer any questions that you may have. And so we looked at an analysis over the last three years. And the Department of Health would have spent around 35,000 for the paid family leave for, in total of the, of all the employees that took. Time off due to having a child. And then that next point is what through analysis, we discovered that on average, for those who are of childbearing age. It would cost the Department of Health just under 11,000 per employee. And then we compared that then to the turnover of the cost of losing employee and. That's just under 13,000. And so I will leave it at that and then welcome Taylor or Bob to come up to answer any questions or if you wanted to add anything.
I think we have various questions, but we also have a, a human relations department. And I really think we should hear from the human relations department on this subject before we continue this discussion.
Yeah.
I don't think they're done yet with their presentation.
Well, but I think one, one relates to the other. In other words.
I, I agree with you, Mr. File, but I believe Taylor has something to say and then we can get to Kim.
Yeah, thank you, everyone. Taylor Murray, Licensed Clinical Social Worker, Department of Health, eighth floor. I hope I did that correctly. So as we were looking at this, one of the big things that we heard as meeting with other HRs across the state. Was that retention portion. So one of the things that kind of got brushed over, but we are seeing currently the largest turnover rate we've had as a nation. It has increased 33% since 2018, which was already a 50% increase from 2020 or 2000, sorry. So what we're guessing is that by 2023, we will probably see an overall increase that will continue on all the way through the next few years. What that means for the, the Department of Health, what that means for the entire county is in May, we had 84 positions open. As of today, we have 88 positions open. So it's really hard to find people. As you said, passionate, invested people who want to be here for the long run. Who are interested in staying when we're comparing cost, what my annual salary be, but also those benefits. And what you're going to see overall is yes. When that slide said wellbeing on the Workforce Institute, which is a national institute that looks at retention and employment and turnover rates across the nation. They're saying that wellbeing, part of that is work-life balance that ties to family time. Being able to spend time with your family, invest in your children, invest in your spouse. And then the other part of that was the wellbeing includes paid parental leave. So they're lumping that in as some of the three reasons that people decide to leave a position and find better ones. It's not something that we're wanting to. Fall behind in. It's really hard to attract people to government. It's a great job, but it's hard to attract people here. And so we're wanting to make sure that people are more invested in staying with us so that we're getting those bright ideas. That young people bring from their new college educations, from their experience in other private and public sectors. That's what we need to kind of continue to move the Department of Health forward and hopefully the county as a whole. So I will let Kim go and go ahead and give her presentation and then we'll follow up again. Thank you.
Taylor. I'm sorry, just a, a quick question or any one of you. How, how did you quantify, it's gone. It's back.
Yeah.
The turnover cost, how, how did you guys come up with the value on that?
Yeah, absolutely. So it's 30% of an employee's annual salary and that, where that comes from is that Workforce Institute. They saw that overall, when you look at retention and turnover, you're looking at not just somebody leaving, but you're looking at the empty space. So employees having to pick up that space, then you're looking at onboarding time. And somebody else having to teach that person that job, which then cuts down on productivity. And then it takes usually on average, six months for somebody to be fully up and running and functioning within their position. So that's on average, a 30% loss when somebody leaves a position who's qualified, competent and knows the material.
And based on what you just said, one of the variables in there is, is the time the position goes unfilled. And, and you guys also commented on how we've had some positions go unfilled for quite a while. So, so. In our organization, that, that figure might even be.
Yeah, it's going to be higher. And part of that is, we know that not just the future people, but the positions open now, they're just, it's not as competitive. The pay is not competitive as much and some of them have been open since May. I was able to speak with HR this morning and get those numbers and that idea, which is what I was able to bring to you today. And so. We're all aware that there's a shortage of employees. You can't go to the gas station or the grocery store without realizing there is not enough people. And part of that is because more people are going back to school, figuring out what they're passionate about and then pursuing those careers. So if we want those people who are in active pursuit of their careers, we have to be a job that persuades them to come and stay with us. And ideally, past the 90 days, past the one-year mark, we get that return in investment at three to six years for a single employee. So you're really investing in that person. You want to keep them. And for people who are ages 20 to 29 and then technically 34. One of the things that they're looking for is paid parental leave according to the Workforce Institute. So that's one of the things that we are saying, hey, we can provide this. We see not a lot of costs from the Department of Health side. We have a large female staff. And on average, we're only having one, maybe two people give birth a year. And so it's that not just families and the idea of taking care of people, putting families first, but it's also how do we keep people here? Because if I'm 28 and if in three years I want to have a child, I have to think about what cost that's going to be. Though we do have that short-term disability, $250 a week does not cover the cost of a child or being off work. That's on average less, that's about one-third of our employee salaries for the entry-level jobs. And that's one-fourth of others' positions and one-fourth of your salary does not entice you to stay.
Thank you so much. That's a lot of great information.
Thank you.
Quick question. Wait, wait, Dick. This, this is not a public hearing on this. This is just a request by them. Would we hear from Kim today or at the public hearing?
Well, I would hope we can hear from her today because I think we need to see both sides of this something. I think we ought to have the, we should have the advice of our own department.
Can, can I speak to that real quick? And I do believe that Kim should have her chance to speak. I think that's really important. I want you to know that we have gone over this, not just, we have requested assistance from HR for the last six months. And when we were not receiving that same request and that assistance, we then turned to our local H, or the HRs around us and asked them, can you look at this policy? So they were able to review the policy, show us what they were currently working on. And so we were able to model this policy directly off of what others are proposing and actively pushing for. And so I absolutely agree that we need our HR board for this, but we were able to start this policy by looking at what are other people doing? Who are our direct competitors? And they were very kind and they were taking a lot of time to spend with me over this. And they were actually able to run a cost analysis overall for their entire county before they implemented it. Louisville did a great job in their cost analysis that they shared with us pretty openly.
Thank you very much.
Question, you brought up the question of the reasons for turnover, the reasons for people staying. And, and I guess we would all agree that there are a wide variety of reasons for that. But I would say that one of the biggest reasons for the turnover is that people need more pay for work done rather than more pay for work not done. In other words, I think particularly when you're involved in an inflationary environment and, and I'm in, I'm in the business world. And so I'm speaking from personally experience. When you're in a highly inflationary environment where the people pay a lot more for the gas and for every time they go to the grocery store. The thing that keeps those people there is better pay for the job they do now. They need cash now. Much more than they need some better benefit for some other time, for some other circumstance. It's just a comment, when you have very low inflation, then, then you don't have as much pressure on pay for work done. And you have a better environment than for benefit type subjects. So all I've got to say from a personal experience in the, in the free enterprise system is this is a particular time. When we need to concentrate on pay for work done rather than bigger benefits. And that's what, that's what I've been experiencing in another business here in town. It's just something to think about.
I absolutely, sorry, one second. I absolutely agree with you. We do need to be paid more. However, you will never pay me as much as I'll get in private practice. You won't. You will never pay me as much as a private nonprofit will. So yes, ideally, and pay, pay us more. That'd be fantastic. But one of the things that took me here was my passion for the job. But one of the things that will keep me here and keep others here is how do I function in this job? What does work-life balance look like? For millennials, pay is important, but it's less important than that work-life balance. Studies are showing that. Yes, I would love to get paid $90,000 a year, but part of that is saying, when we look at work-life balance, what allows me to spend time with my family? Enjoy time off, enjoy the life that I'm not just working 45, 50 hours a week at. And so I do agree with you. Absolutely. We do need to be paid more, but we're just not going to be competitive enough in that space.
Keep in mind that the taxpayer can't pay for part of your compensation. The taxpayer pays for all of our compensation. No matter what the source of that compensation is. So. So we can't, you know, we can't say, well, we can do a lot more for pay now and a lot more for pay later. And say whatever that adds up to is what we're going to do to our taxpayers. I don't believe in that.
First, first, I absolutely agree with you. And again, in full transparency, in terms of the need for higher pay, that is, Mr. File. We will be coming to you for a request for higher pay, having just lost four nurses within the last month. With at least a couple of them offered $20,000 more salary and a signing bonus of $9,000. We will never be able to compete with that, but what we can do. Is we can at least compete with getting them in the door with a benefit package, even though the total remuneration package. Will never equal what's happening in the, in the private sector, but if we can get them in the door. And give me a chance to keep people like Taylor and Cassie, then I can, I can do that. The other thing where I think you would agree with me, Mr. File. Is that we keep saying taxpayer, taxpayer, taxpayer. But this isn't just, our revenue is far, is more than just the taxpayer. And certainly within the health department. We're growing our revenue and I expect to grow our revenue. And we need, we need to be entrepreneurial and we need to have the ability to take some risks with the expectation that there will in fact be a return on investment. And the last thing I guess I would say, and just to reiterate, though I recognize that you and I see things a little bit differently and that's okay. Is that at the end of the day, I will contend that though this costs us money upfront. At the end of the day, it's an, it is a cost savings for us as a county.
Thank you.
I just want to, one other comment about the taxpayer side of this. One of the things you cannot do with an organization of 1,322 people. Is say that a major change in fringe benefits in one department is the ender of the cost or the situation. So I think you have to look at 1,322 people and what the project will cost when you do that for all of those people. So to put it in the health department on the idea that's a health department subject is not what it really is.
And again, if I could respond, I agree with you 100% and hence the reason for my opening comments and in full transparency. This is a policy that will help families and help our community if adopted throughout the department. And it is not appropriate for this to be a policy just for the health department. I would hope that the entire county would adopt it, perhaps not now, perhaps next year, see what we do with this, see if it works out. But my preference, of course, would be right now. I think there is legitimate question about twelve weeks, twenty-four weeks, a year, six weeks. I think that's where there's room for compromise.
Thank you, Mr. Krasinski. To answer your question, as far as this not being a public hearing and hearing from HR this evening or during the public hearing, you are the chairman of this committee, so that is your call, sir.
For, I, I would say that typically historically is it's not a, somebody comes up and rebuts what the person presented. However, if any of the council members have a question of another department or a person that's in, that has always been allowed and
could not have.
Not so much for Dick's question, but I do have a question for HR department. If you would be so kind. As you've presented, I, I find it would be very problematic to do this for just one department. So I'm going to get our human resources department's opinions or thoughts of what this could even look like, if this is even a legitimate thing or to do county why, because I can't imagine myself deciding that this makes sense for one department.
At the request of Councilman File and Councilman Nolan, I guess we'll allow the rebuttal from our
rebuttal, she's answering my question.
Answered questions from our human resource department, Kim.
Kim Karkelitz, Human Resource Director, St. Joseph County, offices on the seventh floor of this building. Question from Corey. What can you read first?
Basically, is this even, has, has HR considered anything like this county why? Is this within the realm of reasonableness? And if not, why not? Because I agree with everything they said. This sounds like this would be a great benefit, but I just can't bring myself to even consider this for one department and not all of them. So my next step would be, does this make sense county why or not?
So we would have to look at the true cost as we have somebody out for FMLA at this time for the twelve weeks that is available for family members. That would be the mother or the father at that time. They use their benefit time and so the department does pay that. They have the option of doing the short-term disability. But at times departments may need to pay overtime for coverage, may need to outsource for coverage currently under FMLA. So now if we are not having the employee use their benefit time also, you'll have additional time that you are going to be covering past that twelve weeks too. So I would have to go and do further information from departments that it, this would be a very effective and would be something that would be detrimental to the department, especially now when we're right in a shortage kind of situation. And again, the job market that we are seeing right now and what we're seeing out there is something we haven't seen ever, ever. So it's not just one benefit that is getting people. It is the package that you provide. And yes, we do a very good package in some areas and some areas we could definitely improve on. But doing this parental leave for full pay for twelve weeks, I would see that it would be detrimental to many departments in trying to do that coverage. Now currently, the
Just to be clear, detrimental part of that is because in order to cover the costs and then cover them for the person that's not there. You agree that this would be a benefit for the person?
Benefit for the person that they're not having to use their benefit time and they can use that later on.
And it's
And they're gonna, I mean, if it was offered to me for full pay twelve weeks, I would take the full pay twelve weeks. And then I would take my five, and I would take my five weeks of vacation on top of that and my, you know, sick time that I could take that would ramp up, you know, that we allow to roll over for twelve weeks. So with that being considered, there is benefit time that's given that they could get paid while they're on FMLA. But again, if we're doing a paid time, we also are going to have them out for that other benefit time too.
But, okay, I'm, I'm just trying to make sure I'm understanding your interpretation of detrimental. So you're saying because of this climate that every industry is in, as far as lack of workers, you say that's, is that what you mean by detrimental to different departments?
I, I think it would be a very strong hardship for many departments.
That is what you're saying.
Yes.
Because of the climate of every industry out there right now.
The climate that we're in and them having to pay on top of them not using their benefit time and having to cover that time also. So you could have over, over a year of somebody being out of their position, it having to be covered by others, having to be paid overtime.
So, so I'm clear. If we decided to have some number of weeks where they would get paid their full salary, then after that they could then go on that. Would that be correct?
So you're talking about not paying full?
No, I'm saying if we did, if we decided to have that and the person took advantage of that, let's say it was twelve weeks. Then from, would that same person be eligible then on week thirteen or the extended?
To do their vacation, to do their sick time, to do all of that. Well, as it is right now at the federal level, it would work in, in the same way as FMLA is, other than it would be adding the pay.
In other words, they would, they would not pay.
FMLA is
I don't even know what the number is, but is it six weeks, whatever?
It's twelve weeks.
Okay, so it's twelve weeks. If I had, if Diana had a baby today, she could take twelve weeks off without pay under FMLA and her employer couldn't do anything about it, correct?
Correct. They're protected in their job for that twelve weeks under FMLA.
If St. Joe County had twelve weeks of full pay, could she take the twelve weeks full pay and then take twelve, another twelve weeks of FMLA? This is just paid FMLA.
This is paid FMLA. It would work in conjunction with FMLA. So that time would not be available for FMLA later on. But they would still have their sick time that they could take. They still have their vacation and personal time also.
Mr. Root.
Reminds again, how many days can an employee bank under the current benefit system? And is that enough to cover twelve weeks of FMLA right now?
So our banking of our benefits system, it goes by how many years you've been here and it ramps up the longer, longer time that you're here. So right now, you know, the maximum that we have on a vacation is if you've been here twenty years, you get the twenty-five days. On the sick time, you get sick time every year and then that is able to roll over if you don't use it. So we have the max of sick time of being four hundred and eighty hours, which would cover you for twelve weeks.
How, how long would it take to accumulate four hundred and eighty hours?
So it gives you fifty-six hours every year.
So that's, that's like a week and a half. I guess what I'm getting at is, you know, we've got a gal who's twenty-eight years old, who, who might be thinking about within a few years having kids. It's pretty unlikely that this class of people that we want to attract and retain would have achieved twenty years of experience and have the five weeks of vacation and have the four hundred, four hundred and eighty hours of, of sick time. I mean, those people that have accumulated that, if Diana decides to have children, might be able to take advantage of that. But I, I think that the young people that have graduated from college, you know, I, I mean, at twenty-eight, she couldn't have been here more than three or four years. You know, so, so, so she couldn't have accumulated that level of benefit.
Right. This, what they're asking for is the full twelve weeks of pay. Currently, at the federal level, there is a plan with the bill currently being set out that would be currently four weeks paid. Now that, if it passes the federal level, we would have to implement that here at the county. Okay, that's just like with the FMLA, just like with the FFCRA that was established. We had to put that into place. Before COVID, there was no such thing as a paid leave at the county level. Okay, until we had that FFCRA.
But if that happens, and then we only have that, that's not a retention tool at all.
And that would be given out at the federal level. I really don't think
What I'm saying is if we're only as good as everybody else, we aren't doing anything new to retain or attract. And, and now we all know that we underpay these people. So now we're right back where we are. So, so whatever the federal government decides to do, if we're going to view this as, as a tool to retain and attract, we need to do not as good, but better than our peers.
That is correct, but I don't think this one benefit is going to do enough to attract and retain.
And, and, and you might be right. And Councilman File might be right, you know, in his commentary regarding, we need to put money into people's pockets. But I do find it interesting that the people from the demographic that this is aimed to address aren't saying those things. They're saying something different, like these are the benefits we want. Sure, we want more pay. She could leave here today and get more pay. So this is a benefit that she wants. And then I, I have to assume, sadly, I don't hang out with a lot of twenty-eight-year-old girls anymore, so I don't really know what they want. I'm not sure I ever did.
They appreciate that.
That means you're an experienced father.
But I think for, you know, we, we have this opportunity to be hearing from these people and we're telling them what they should want. And that's confusing to me. And that's not really, I mean, I'm not even asking you a question. I'm just kind of stating.
There's many different benefits that could be a great benefit for that younger demographic. You know, flexible work schedule, doing something more with their college loan reimbursements, things of that nature. You would also get that group coming in and retaining them. So I just don't think it's this one benefit that's going to do what you want. I think you have to look at the overall and come up with something that's going to be beneficial for more of the majority that you're going to have as county employees.
I also, I also think, you know, this is not being discussed as a, as a benefit for a very small number of younger employees. This is, this is being talked about across the board regardless of your age for everybody.
Right, but it's, it's the group of younger employees that we want to attract and retain.
Why not keep the ones we got?
We have to do both.
Okay.
That's kind of what she's asking for. That's part of what she's saying, right, is you, you were going to keep people like her who may
Correct.
who could go to the city of South Bend and make more money, better benefits with the qualifications that she has. So yeah, I, I also think it's disturbing to me always that we seem to expect the worst behavior of our employees. Like, oh, if we give them this and they're going to take this and they're going to take advantage of this and not just respect them for knowing, being an adult and mature enough to know their job, do what's expected of them, take the benefits they're given. So I find that disturbing always. And I would also say that this particular proposal is, addresses health metrics in our county with, and those metrics right now are horrible. Maternal health, childbirth rates, it's all there. We are at the bottom of those. You know, we're at the top of the bad statistics pool in this county when it comes to those health measures. And also our county employees, all thirteen hundred and twenty-two, well, not all of them probably, but most of them probably are also county taxpayers here in this county.
And the, the part about the health and the family and all that, that's exactly why it intrigues me. Again, I'm back to, I would have a very hard time choosing for one department over the others. But it's a very intriguing thing. You know, what does it actually cost overall? That's kind of why I want to get HR's opinion on this and some, some data on, you know, what this could look like. And maybe it's not, maybe we can't afford twelve weeks. Can we afford six?
So in
What can we expect for that?
In the past, when benefits were given to county employees that were suggested, that were reviewed, it would go through you guys here at the council and commissioners to review that as far as what benefits that were being offered. So I really think if this is something that is going to go forward or you guys are considering moving with a parental leave like that, we should follow the same, same guidelines that we have with other benefits that the county has put in place for county employees.
Mr. Root, Kim, how many employees a year would be impacted by this new benefit?
I can't, I can't give you that because I don't know how many would actually take a parental leave. It's, it's, it's not a number that I can come up with for you.
But would it be fair to say it's a fairly small percentage?
With our age population, probably currently, not saying that that's not going to change or couldn't change.
But it would be fair to say that the majority of our employees would probably not see any benefit at all from this particular benefit. They might be interested actually in other benefits.
The
Healthcare costs or
As I think in your presentation, you had referenced, you know, the age group being that age group between the twenty and, and low thirty age.
Mr. File, you have any other question?
No, I, I, I just think that at the very minimum, we would have to have an analysis of the potential costs of doing this in all departments. Certainly one department doesn't tell us what a fraction of the cost. So I think that's involved. And the other matter happens to come from what I think inflation does to a workforce. Because I've been there before and seen it before. And when you have high inflation, people need the money for what, for working, not more money for not working.
Any other questions for Kim? Hearing none. Do I hear a motion on one twenty-seven dash twenty-one?
Who's not favorable?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Better take a no vote.
I think we better take a yes, no vote. Mr. Hammond, can you do that, please?
You know what?
I'd remind you, I'm not on the committee.
I'm not on the committee.
Take that in the committee.
Trying to be progressive.
Who's on the committee?
Everybody but everybody but Joe and Mr. Root.
So, 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 so here's, so there's no motion then, because he's not on the committee. Because he's not on the committee.
I'll make a motion to send it without.
Okay, I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to send it to the full council without a recommendation. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It goes to the council without a recommendation.
Thank you. Next is land use planning. Mr. Nolan?
First, we had actually, it looks like the only one, we have bill number one twenty-eight dash twenty-one, land vacation additioner. Mister Airport.
Thank you, Chairman Nolan. Good evening.
I have one question. Why does your land need a vacation?
I'm sorry?
Has your land been working extra hard and it needs a vacation?
I, I will move on if I may. Very briefly, what's in front of you today, I, I assume you've seen maps that depict where this area is. Okay. So what's in, what's in front of you for consideration is there are many roadways that were that's coming up. Yeah, you can see the roadways in blue that are all north of the new Lincoln Way at this time. And those roadways were never vacated. The airport owns all the property all around those things. And those roadways were never vacated. The airport owns all the property all around those things. But as we have continued to do some due diligence and looking at our properties, we have some land issues with titles and we're working on those. We found a title, uh, just today that's over a hundred years old, and it was in the year nineteen hundred. We can't find the original title, and the feds want some information. So what we're trying to do in this area here is have those roads vacated, and then the land will become adjacent and become part of the airport property. To that end, I don't know why it's called a vacation. You have to ask our attorney.
Any questions of anyone who's left?
We've lost our leader. How can we do anything?
If anyone had.
No, not really. Um, like he said, they own all the parcels adjacent to the streets. They're unimproved. Um, the area is not really suitable for any other, uh, type of development, given the close proximity to the runways. So, um, area plan recommends that the vacation be approved.
There aren't a lot of people looking to build their houses.
All right. If we have enough people left to vote, and they would care to make a motion.
You got a favorable.
Take it. All's in favor. Aye. Pose. Should go with a favorable recommendation. Thank you for your patience.
I, we, I think we should thank Jennifer for leaving the best for the last with Chairman Nolan.
That's not the last.
That's not the last.
It's close.
Take that same comment from me, because I am the last.
We're going to show us. We got, things were looking good, but you lost.
Next, we have Next, we have bill one twenty-three twenty-one from PSAP.
Holy feedback. You guys hear me?
Yeah, yeah, no.
You guys need a break. You've been doing it like three hours. All right, so I am back, I am back again. Um, so just for, I, I realize that after the flurry of emails and the discussion over the last couple of weeks that I knew the backstory and not everybody remembered where we got, how we got here. So in May, in June, we hashed out a compensation package for the dispatchers. Not all of you were there, um, so you guys maybe not didn't know how exactly that all happened. So when that was all said and done, and, uh, and Councilman Nolan, uh, transcribed the, uh, the retention package, the very end of the meeting, I said, great, we should probably think about what to do with administration, but I know you don't want to talk about me when I'm here, so I'm going to leave and you guys talk about it. And it didn't happen. So then we got into budget season, and you guys got ridiculously busy, and it got pushed off and pushed off and pushed off. And one of the things you guys said was, so I came back to committee, you guys said, bring me a proposal. That's the proposal. It is a retention policy. It builds up about all of the things that you guys just got done talking about. Paying people for being at work and retaining the good people that we have. And all of that, we created a separation between labor and management. Or we took away the separation between labor and management with the wage package. So when you guys asked for, uh, a presentation, some numbers to put together, I put together an apples-to-apples comparison based upon the previous separation of ranks and the amount of new money that was part of the wage package from the dispatchers. And I put it as a retention bonus. It's in the, it's in the longevity line item that I provided a couple of times now. Uh, there's a look-ahead budget, so you guys see what the impact is for years to come. Uh, if you need a magnifying glass at the very bottom, uh, what the deal is with the reserves is that in three or four years, it gets kind of lean, and then we start building back up again. So I'm happy to answer any questions. It was a launching part. It's a launching point. It's a apples-to-apples comparison about where we were in April versus where we are in what's coming up on December. And I'm asking for you guys to pass work with, suggest however we can keep our admin, admin, and I'm not saying that they're going to leave. I'm not saying that they're not going to leave. I'm not speaking for anybody in particular. I gave you an example in several of the emails of what, so that you saw the disparity. And when we talk about hours worked, I will tell you that this retention is a bonus for the number of hours that we are physically there and working. And the hours that have been spent over time working, because you guys know what the situation has been since twenty fifteen. And all the people we're talking about are almost all have been here since the inception. So they, they, they worked the hours, they, they worked through all the adversity, they've stayed with the county, they're loyal people, they're great at their job. And I feel like we should retain them. Happy answering questions.
Any questions from council?
What, what is the cost of this then that we're talking about?
Hundred seventy-eight thousand over, hundred seventy-eight thousand, that's the last three periods of this year, all of next year, and that includes taxes, pension, that's an out-the-door cost.
I don't know, I guess I would like to have a better idea of, of what's happening, for instance, with the pay levels we're talking about here compared to other departments. For instance, don't we have several department heads that got a one percent raise, and that's what we did?
Yep.
But it, but this, this isn't providing a one percent raise for the department head, is it?
No.
It did. You guys did that. You guys did that. This is just retention.
Well, this, the budget set that you adopted did have one percent increases at a minimum in them. Uh, the dispatchers got larger increases, of course, so.
But that was part of the budget process.
It was. So this Go ahead, Ray.
This would have also been part of the budget process had we tackled it in May, but we got busy and it got dropped. And so we would have, and then when it got busy, and you guys started to have ridiculous amount of meetings, I was told, wait until, wait until late, wait till later, wait till later. Well, the deal is now is that I've got day shift bids open, and if I folks want to go back to being dispatchers, I have a decision to make. Can they go back and be dispatcher, make more money, and get the shift they want? They've been here for years and years and years and years. We owe them the respect of their blood, sweat, and tears to give them an answer if we're going to move, if we can move forward or not with this, this part of the proposal. I'm not saying they're threatening it. I'm not saying they're going to leave. I'm just saying they have a decision to make if they want.
Steve, Bobby, you were going to ask a question.
Send some emails. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Um, there was some confusion, I think, on that weekend. Uh, John had sent this out to you guys. Uh, packaged as entirely a, a pay increase. I, I remember asking in my response, is this on top of the retention bonuses that, uh, Ray had come to you and asked for? So this is one request. It's not pay increases and a retention bonus. Those are two terms that end up at the same result, an increase for the administration, so that they don't have this, the dispatchers getting paid the same or more than them. That's one, one increase, not two. I may have confused you. John may have confused you.
Is it a retention bonus, or is it a, is it a pay increase?
It is.
It is.
Go ahead, Ray.
It's retention. It's in the longevity line item, the budget for, the budget that I provided for you guys with the fork, with the five-year forecast. It's all in retention. It's all
But it increased, yeah, but it, it increases salaries, correct?
They get paid more on their paycheck. Yes.
So it's a salary increase, isn't it?
Um, it's a portion of their paycheck that, that is being called a retention bonus. It will be on the paycheck.
I don't, when I get a paycheck, I just add it all up, and that's my paycheck.
I, I'm sure.
On this one, you have to state again.
I don't, my paycheck, I don't separate my paycheck between three or four things. It's just my paycheck.
Right.
Okay, does it happen one time, and then it never repeats itself, or does it happen repeatedly in perpetuity?
Yes.
Well, it would happen for twenty-one and twenty-two if you guys approve it that way.
Well, in twenty-three, do you imagine that you could take it back?
Well, it depends. I, I hope, I hope not, but we, we can't predict what our financial forecast is going to be. We, we know where we're, we're going to be right now.
Quacks like a duck, it's a duck. It's a salary increase.
Well, I don't, I guess I don't understand if we're going to, if we want to keep people and we want to pay them for being at work and the hard hours they're putting in, I'm putting in sixty hours a week. I, I, I don't work for a for-profit. I work for a government. I work for a county. I, I can't, I don't make more to make money for my company. I work more to do a better job for the, for the people, for the citizens. So, and that, and my staff is that entire way. We're working ridiculous amount of hours. If we stop doing that, the level of service isn't going to be the same. So you're rewarding people for staying and doing the hard work that we've been doing for half a decade.
Just, just one thing. I don't want to stay with this too long. I don't want to be the person that keeps asking these questions, please. But we went through a budget process, and I thought these people got major, got some major increases as part of our budget process. I, I didn't think we were, they were party.
Did, the administration did not. The administration got what everybody else got.
So the, this administration is, was treated like the other administrations.
Well, except they are staff, there's a
Salary increase, whatever you want to call it, they're asking for the administrative staff.
This, this is addressing, because we did give those raises to non-administrative, non-administrative people. That's why this is coming up.
And I just used the number that made, I was seventeen percent, seventeen percent, twenty-five percent, twenty-five percent. I just tried to keep the numbers, keep the numbers the same, so that for, for equality, it was, I, I don't know, maybe I confused it. I don't know. I was trying to make it, I was trying to make it easier. Maybe I made it harder. I don't know.
Well, and I'm not, I don't know that I have a definitive answer on where I'm going to fall down on this, but when the staff was underpaid, that doesn't necessarily mean that the administration was underpaid by the same percentage, or at all. We did agree that staff was underpaid, and we corrected that situation. Now it's up to, I would say it's up to you to convince the council that, and you're kind of doing that, that the administration is underpaid, but to me, it's not because the staff got twenty percent raises. That means that the administration has to get twenty percent.
No, I was just, and I'm not either. I'm just, I'm not either. I'm just saying that that's the, that is a, that is a equal, that's, that's an equal comparison. So for somebody that doesn't have to work the hours, isn't going to be on call for weeks at a time, isn't getting woke up at two, three, four in the morning for administrative questions like we do all the time. If we're going to spend those extra hours, then it makes sense to include that in in the, in this retention thing. I'm not, I'm not saying you guys are, you guys are getting a heck of a bargain now for the hours that we're putting in. If, and I did, I did provide a comparison to Lake and Hamilton and Fort Wayne, our three biggest competitors. This still puts us below them, except for Fort Wayne, and Fort Wayne has two of me. So if they're not, he's not doing the same, they're not doing the same job, because the city of Fort Wayne has their own, like South Bend does not. So if, if South Bend had their own administration for dispatch, and San Jo County had the same administration for dispatch, there would be less work for San Jo County to do it, therefore, you have to pay them as much, because they're not there as much. So that's, Allen County is a different, different, a different matrix. So if you want to compare Hamilton and Lake are two closest, then we're still below them in the administration side.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Katanzer, I had a question.
Mr. Katanzer, aye.
Hey, Ray, just, I hear you a lot on the radio nowadays, Ray. So you're obviously working shifts due to vacancies, sickness, and whatever, for whatever reason. And you've probably covered this, but I just want to make sure, I'm just going to verify. Are you guys getting overtime for working when you administrators have to work a shift? Or is this what you would, is this what you're proposing to do in lieu of overtime?
This would be in lieu of overtime. This is, because right now we're doing a one-for-one flex that, that we can't take.
Flex hours or time, okay, you can't take.
Time, no, that we can't take, because we still have a job to do eight to five, and we've got a lot of projects in the air, so.
And that's a one, one-for-one for every hour you work, you get one hour of compensation of flex time you can't take?
That is, that is correct. As long as we're doing it after hours, and, and my staff
Above, above me on your regular shift, which is, I'm assuming, four thirty in the afternoon, okay? So this is an approach to help, to help actually compensate you guys for working those shifts.
Correct.
And for retention and longevity and all, all the reasons that were mentioned earlier in the health department presentation. Just wanted to confirm that. I, I do hear you on the radio a lot, so I know you are working a lot.
And the, the deal is with that is I, I just can't sit at home while, I can't sit at home and let people get mandated another day off and sit at home watch football. Uh, uh, that's not me. And Diana, Diana does police. So you don't hear Diana on the fire radio as much. Diana does police, Nancy does fire, Julie does supervision more. Shane does pretty much everything. So that's why, that, that's why you hear me on fire, because that's all I can do.
Understood. Thank you so much for the information.
Thank, thanks, you.
Any other comments or questions for Mr. Schultz? Hearing none, do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Katanzer, aye.
I would make a motion that we send it forward without a recommendation.
There's a motion on the floor to send it without recommendation. And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Guys have, those are council without a recommendation.
That concludes our committee meeting.
Have a great Thanksgiving, everybody. Have a great Thanksgiving.
Should we have a brief conversation about the ARP meeting schedule? Because I understood that there may be a proposal that we cancel next Tuesday night's meeting. Is that, is that accurate?
Well, now, you mean on the thirtieth, you're saying? Well, yeah, I had originally had a commitment, but, um, then when Mr. Talon was like, let's keep him on Tuesdays, you know, I can be here.
What is your pleasure? We currently have scheduled, uh, PSAP, EMA, and the coroner. Yeah, that's, at your request, you wanted to have the coroner here, uh, next Tuesday.
I mean, you know, I can, I can, I mean, that's not, I, I committed to be at a meeting in reference to redistricting. Imagine that. But, um, you know, but, um, if, I mean, if, you know, if we, if we want to have a meeting on the thirtieth, then that's, I will be here. This makes
You guys' call. I, if I, I'll be here, but if it's only one or two of you, that's not going to be a good meeting, so how many is going to, how many people can be around?
Don't, don't cancel the meeting because of my absence, because I can, I will be here if we're going to have the meeting, if the majority of
It is scheduled. Yeah, I'm asking if it needs to be rescheduled. That's why I'm asking right now, because it's a week out.
That, don't reschedule it on my part.
Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, because we, we were supposed to be at the same meeting.
Okay.
Yes. Yes.
So
So now all three of you will be here?
I can't speak for the, both of them.
I, I get that.
Now you're two of nine.
I can be there.
Thanks, Mark. Okay, we'll keep it then.
I have every intention of being here.
And then we'll keep the fourteenth and the twenty-first as we originally planned. So there's no changes to the plant, to the schedule that went out to all of you. There have been a few entities that have moved on that list, and I will update that tomorrow, in case you care. Youth Service Bureau couldn't come one day, but they could come a different day, vice versa.
Are we going to make sure that the departments are notified?
There were notes that went out today. Some of them had heard hints, but today they got official notes. Frank.
All right.
Yes, thank you. That's all I had.
We're good? Thank you. Thank you, everyone.